Five thirty, if we can all have a seat so we can get the show on the road. My goal again is to try to get out of here at nine twenty-nine. Let's see if we can shoot for that nine twenty-nine. Okay, I have been been challenged over here. I hope everyone had a great day. All right. Okay, so. Good afternoon, it is the reg- regular board me- meeting of the the Adalanto El Elementary School Dis- District, the date is Aug- August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. And this is our call to order, call to order. Can I get a roll, roll call please?
Madam President, the time is five thirty-one, I'll take roll call. Trustee Akas.
Here.
Trustee La French.
La French, present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee Benz.
And Benz, present. Let's go, go on to one point zero, zero four, the pledge of allegiance, please, please stand.
Place your right, right hand over your heart, ready, be, be, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, go, going on to us, adoption of the agenda, agenda two point zero, zero, one, per proposed additions, deletions, adjustments in the order of business.
Madam President, we do have one. Item thirteen oh two, academic services conference request. Under the academic services Ares, Ares Con, the date should be November seventh through the tenth, twenty-twenty-two, and March seventh through the ninth, twenty-twenty-three, not twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-three, okay. All right, um, where am I? Lost my place. Okay, move, moving on to two point zero, zero two, adopt, adoption of the agenda. I, I, I need a mo- motion to approve.
I could say motion.
Webster, I second, thank you. Call for the vote, vote please.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akas.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- motion passes, five, zero. Okay, we're go, going to go on to special, special rec- recognition. And I believe we have a stu- student presentation.
Yes, that is correct, Madam President, members of the board. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening for our board meeting. I'd like to call up Mr. Alex Verduzco, the proud principal of Victoria McGathen Elementary School. And he has some great information on the dual immersion program over there, so Mr. Verduzco, take it away.
Good evening, Madam President, esteemed board, executive cabinet.
Um, hold on, I don't think his mic, microphone is on, is it on?
Yes.
It's on, okay.
Was I not speaking loud enough? Sorry about that. There we go. Let me start again. Good evening, Madam President, esteemed board, executive cabinet, and interim superintendent, Mr. Kraus. I'm Alex Verduzco, principal at Victoria McGathen Elementary. And with me are parents and some students that I'd like to introduce, and one of my teachers. So we have, they're going to present a little bit about our dual immersion program. And it's just a program that we are very proud of, so our students would like to talk about that. Uh, we have Ms. Ruby Sandoval, our fifth grade dual immersion teacher. And we have Ms. Stacy Stewart. Mother of one of our fifth grade students, John Stewart May. We also have parent Consuelo Saria. And she brought a couple of her students, one former student and one current student, so we have Natalie. Oh, I'm sorry, they're, they're all former students, Natalie and Larry are here today with us. And we also have another former student, Lindsay Medrano. And her brother is a current student at our school, Enzo. So they'd like to come up and just talk a little bit about our program. Come on up, guys.
Good girl.
Good evening, uh, my name is Lindsay Medrano, and.
We gotta just put that a little closer, so, so those on, on Zoom can, can hear too. But please, don't, don't be, be nerv- nervous, okay? If I can do this, you're good, you're good.
Um, my name is Lindsay Medrano, I'm seventeen years old and I'm currently a senior at Adalanto High School. Um. I have a lot to talk about, but this is my second time being up here talking about the benefits of dual immersion classes. And dual immersion classes have helped me academically, being able to move on and take more Spanish classes going on to my middle school year. And finally promoting from my eighth grade with a stamp by literacy on my diploma. This has tremendously paid off, having years and years of Spanish classing, classes helped me be able to translate for those who do not speak English or those who do not speak Spanish. I'm always the one who helps my fellow classmates that have just enrolled into high school and do not know how to speak English or even understand the language. I'm able to make new friends by knowing how to speak both languages. Not to mention having Spanish as one of your base languages makes it easier to read, study, and understand other languages. Similar to Spanish such as Italian, Portuguese, and maybe even a few hints of French. Research also serves that learning a different language can help children that are still developing their brain have better listening and thinking skills. It can improve memory and be able to concentrate more. It also helps with literacy and problem solving. I would also like to add that I have a better chance of finding unique jobs or even getting a little pay raise by knowing different languages. Spanish being the most needed since it is one of the most languages that are spoken in the whole entire world. Dual immersion classes have, they helped me develop a better understanding of my own, own culture and other cultures that involve Spanish. I'm able to freely travel to other countries and be confident in speaking Spanish at my best with others. Being able to understand and hold a proficient conversation with people such as waiters, cashiers, and people from the community.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Uh, good evening, board members. Is it, all right. Uh, good evening, board members, my name is Larry Saria. I was on the dual immersion program from kinder to fifth grade in Victoria McGathen. Uh, and continued in Melva Davis from six to eight. Uh, I'm currently attending high school at Cobalt Institute of Math and Science. Uh, in ninth grade, I took the AP Spanish Language and Culture exam that evaluates students on the Spanish language. My score was, was a five, which is the highest score. I will be able to use this score to give me university credits. The dual immersion program has helped me to write, read, and speak Spanish and English perfectly. It also helps me maintain the language of my parents and my grandparents. Being bilingual will open many doors for me. Thank you for supporting this program, so my teachers that have taught me, but especially to my parents that made me, made the decision of putting me in a dual immersion program. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. He's gonna take a little, just to get ready. Oh, that's okay.
I, I get it, get it.
If I can read it, I would read it for him. He wrote it in both English and Spanish.
Oh. That's awesome.
So he didn't know which one to use. Um, but he writes.
We can wait, we'll wait.
Is he ready? He writes it.
He can sit down in the audience with his mother.
Yeah, his mom, where's mom?
I think she went out with him.
He says, I was here at Victoria McGathen, we are the Tigers. I've, I've been at this school for five years.
I think, um, why don't we let Kim do her thing and this will give.
See if he's able to do it.
Yeah, and, and then we'll, we'll, we'll see if he wants.
Okay. Please come back, please come.
Breaking up even more.
Sorry. So John, I, I don't know if, if you note, noticed, but I stutter. And when, when I was in col- college, I had to do presentations in front of a class of like a hun- hundred stu- students. I don't do well. So I learned to stare at one person and act like I'm just talk, talking to, to them. And for, 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 forget about ev- everyone else, and that helped me get through, through it. So, you know, I know how you're feel- feeling, and it's okay. So just stare at one person or the card and forget about everyone else, okay? It's all right. Good evening.
It's okay then. My name is John Stewart May. Yeah, I, we, we don't want to force.
Would you, would you like to sit in the audience with your mom and sit there with the microphone and talk?
It's okay.
Okay. Okay.
So maybe she'll read the English.
You can read the English.
Good evening, my name is John Stewart May. I am in fifth grade and my school is Victoria McGathen, the Tigers. I was with this school for five years and this year is my fifth year, no, sixth year, excuse me. Also, in all of the five years I was in the Spanish class, including this year. No one in my family knows how to speak Spanish. When we go to Mexico, they tell me to speak Spanish with the people that are speaking Spanish. My family says if I graduate high school speaking Spanish, I could be a bilingual and bilingual person. I don't know what that means, but I know it will make my mom happy. I love my school and I have learned a lot of Spanish. We, the Tigers, are very lucky to have teachers that teach us Spanish and the culture of Latin America. Distance learning was very hard for me because of the internet and sometimes I did not understand what they were saying. But that's okay, because, miss, wait, that's okay, because my teacher, Miss Sandoval, wait. But that's okay. But that's okay, because Mrs. Sandoval is very nice and she has so much planned. And I think this is gonna be one of the best years. I am very proud of myself and so is my family, thank you for supporting the dual immersion program. So he worked really hard on this speech and he wrote it by himself in Spanish first, so I guess he's just nervous. Uh, buenos, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es John Stewart May. Estoy en el quinto grado y mi escuela es Victoria McGathen, los tigres, tigres. Yo he estado en esta escuela por cinco años y este año es el sexto año. También es, en todos los cinco años he estado en clases de español y también este año. Nadie en mi familia sabe cómo hablar en español. Así que siempre cuando vamos a México me dicen que yo hablo español con las personas que están hablando español. Mi familia dice que si yo me gradué de la secundaria, yo voy a ser una persona bilingüe y bilateral. No sé lo que quiere decir, pero va a hacer a mi mamá feliz. Yo amo a mi escuela y me, y aprendo, he aprendido mucho español. Nosotros los tigres ten- tenemos suerte que tenemos maestros que nos enseñan español y la cultura de Latinoamérica. Aprendizaje de distancia fue muy difícil para mí por el internet. Yo no sabía qué estaban diciendo unas veces. Pero este año mi maestra señora Sandoval es muy amable y, y mi maestra tiene muchos planes para nosotros, así que sien. Perdón, sí, así que siento que este año va a ser mejor. Estoy muy orgulloso de mí mismo y mi familia también.
Thank you once again, and as you see, we have a bunch of great current and former students, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Uh, can, can we get a pic, picture with, with our stu- students and the board and cabinet, please? Okay. Okay, so, uh, next is three point zero two, Kim Avlin Gahn. Avlin Gahn, I'd get it. Please.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board and in the community, we're privileged you have Kim join us and talk about a lot of great programs that she's been participating in, so Kim, take it away, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Anthony's gonna do my slides for me, so I will tell him next slide when we're done. Um, good evening, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Superintendent, interim superintendent Kraus, Administration, ADTA, and CSC members and members of the public. My name is Kim Abigliano, I have been a paraprofessional at Adalanto Elementary School District for the past sixteen years. I currently work at Melva Davis Academy of Excellence. My intent was to speak tonight about the CSCA No Cost College Program that has helped thousands of members achieve their higher education dreams. But since the program is on hold at the present time, I wish to share some highlights from our CSCA ninety-sixth annual conference that was held July twenty-fourth through July twenty-eighth in Las Vegas. Next slide. Each year, our chapter nominates delegates to attend its annual business conference, and I was honored to be one of the delegates. Along with Damian Johnson, who is a custodian at Columbia Middle School, Anthony Sinatra, who works in our IT department, and Vera DeCarrojo, who works as a bus aide and a paraprofessional. Damian, myself, had attended conference in twenty nineteen, and I am excited to say that it was Anthony and Vera's first time at conference. This opportunity allows us to represent Adalanto Chapter four-five-one on a statewide level and to share our experiences with our members when we return. This is the conference logo. As a school district or classified employee, I think that no matter what position you hold, we all try to strive together to work together for one good, for, for the good of all students we serve and all of those in our surrounding community in keeping with the mission of CSCA. Next slide. Our conference starts with opening ceremonies and a State of the Union speech by our own associate, association president Shane Dishman. He's quite noted for, known for his hair. Um, so his outfits and everything were kind of elaborate during conference, but it was, it was fun. Um, next slide. Um, on the conference floor on Tuesday, uh, we wore our T-shirts. Um, we honored our veterans. Um, we have a member of the year awards and we have March of the New Stewards. Next slide. Um, I wanted to recognize Damian Stewart. Um, he completed all four levels of the Union Stewart Training in twenty nineteen. COVID happened, we hadn't had a chance to recognize him at conference. So this picture just shows all of our new jacketed stewards, and I kind of tried to hone in on Damian in the corner there. So, um, it, it's for classes that we do basically on a Saturday. Um, there's four levels, you have homework to do. You, one of your homework assignments at the end is to attend board, um, board meetings, recruit new members. So it is kind of, um, it's time consuming, it's all volunteer, so I do appreciate all the new stewardess work for what they do and, and Damian actually had a chance to get recognized, I was very excited. Um, next slide. Um. Can you go to the next one, Anthony? During conference, we have time to pass the bucket and take donations for our CSCA humanitarian fund. This fund allows us to help members within our organization who may be faced with loss due to a natural disaster or personal tragedy. We also were excited to take on a pledge of new victory, club members. We would recruit before the next conference for each of our chapters. I pledged to get twenty-five new victory members and I have twenty left to go. The Victory Club helps us to raise vital funds to support classified friendly plans that's running for our local, state, and federal offices, including schoolwork races. Next slide. Um, this past October, I was honored to be on a state level committee for CSCA. I am the area app representative for the Education Committee. Um, California is broken up into areas, area app is San Bernardino, so I am area app representative for all the CSCA members on, in, in our area. The Education Committee is responsible for providing input on what training CSCA provides through the year to our members, training and webinars for our education days at our annual conference, and our Paraeducator Conference in March every year. I am also honored to be the Chair of the No Cost College Program Task Force. While this benefit is on pause right now, we are hoping for positive solutions for the future. Next slide. On Thursday, we had the first graduation ceremony for some of our members that have graduated from the No Cost College Program. We held this because many graduates could not afford to attend the in-person ceremonies because of our two partner colleges located in Ohio. Here I am head, leading the graduates and along with other members of our task force to pomp and circumstance. It was important for CSCA to recognize those individuals and those that could not be there in person for their dedication to this program. Um, next slide. Here is the cap and gown throw at the end. This opportunity to be on stage and to be a part of this graduation ceremony was amazing experience for me. It was a wonderful feeling to be able to meet the graduates at the reception we had afterward for them and their families. CSCA provided the graduates with a special stole, a diploma covered, and they also reimbursed the members for the cost of their cap and, cap and gowns. Being a student myself, I understand the sacrifices that many of us have made to go back to college. We all have jobs, families, and other daily responsibilities. And the fact that we have made the decision to go back to school is a great accomplishment. I am blessed to have met so many amazing people who share the same story I have. Going back to school at age fifty-three was scary for me since I had never been. I am excited to say that I will be graduating with my associate's degree in social work in December of twenty-twenty-two. It is truly never too late to learn. We have over seven hundred graduates since this program began and almost eight thousand members currently enrolled. In fact, right now, there are over six hundred members currently on the teacher credentialing program. We are certainly hoping for positive solutions in the future, although it is unknown if the benefit will be able to continue in its current form. I will keep you posted. And I also have an update that we've been providing to the members that I will share with you, so you can kind of get a little bit of history of what's going on with the program. And I will definitely keep you all informed. Um, last slide. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and share. As a proud CSCA member, it is important for me to share the experience I had at conference with not only my members, but also with you. My hope that I shed some light on CSCA and the organization. My wish for everyone as the new year has begun is for all of us to continue to work together as one to ensure our students have a wonderful year full of fun and learning. For all of my certified and classified staff, know that I appreciate you for your dedication to Adalanto Elementary School. For the board members, thank you for your support. And I just also wanted to give a shout out, um, Grayling, uh, our CSCA member, right, came to support me tonight. I have Diana, our chapter president, here. Um, Anthony attended conference, it was a great experience for me to talk to him, he's very knowledgeable. I loved sharing ideas with him, so, um, just thank you for allowing me to, to present.
Thank you. Uh, board, do you have any ques- questions or com- comments? Who'd like to go?
I wanna start and say thank you, Kim, for presenting tonight, thank you for your time, I appreciate you so much. I also want to tell all of our students who came out and spoke tonight and wrote speeches. Thank you, you are amazing, Mr. Verduzco, that's an amazing program and I can't wait to see it in action, like hands-on.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I'll go next. Kim, I'm just so proud of you. I'm glad you're doing what you're doing and following your heart and that's just amazing. And thank you for your support team, you guys are awesome, we all need support and you're just gonna do great, I know you are. And again, thank the students, that was beautiful. That we created that program after my kids were too old to go to it, but I would have sent my children to that school, cause that is so powerful. And those students one day are gonna get amazing jobs, I can tell you that right now, just because of that, so thank you for what you do, thank you.
Trustee La, La French?
Yes, I just wanna say, um, I'm proud of you. Going back to school is very hard, I always say to myself, I wish I could, but I always seem to find an excuse that I did go back to school um, after my first two children. And I said, I can do this, and I went back to school, I was very proud, my children were proud, they're proud of me today, you know, for being here with you guys today. You just keep moving, it doesn't matter, you know. You can continue your education no matter what age you are. And for the children, wow, I wished that Kendall could go there. But it was too far, as a single parent, I didn't know how I was gonna get her there, but every time I hear and I see the wonderful stories on how you can start in kindergarten and be bilingual and lead, that is the most amazing thing that I think that in the high desert, we should sell more and more and more and wish we had it available at other schools. Thank you for participating.
Trustee Turner?
Yes, you know, I, uh, kudos to my fellow trustees. I remember going back to school with the family and children and sitting on this one spot on my couch until three o'clock in the morning trying to get this math done. And, you know, I know it's hard, but, you know, congratulations, I'm, I hope that this program continues because it's needed. And to all of you out there that decide to go back to school, kudos to you. Um, my Victoria McGathen dual emergent students, awesome, keep up the good work. We were the first in the high desert to create a dual emergent program. And from what I see, it's, it, it paid off and it's continuing to pay. And from what I see, it's it it paid off and it's continuing to pay off. At one time, it kind of went down, but I'm so glad that Mr. Verduco, you brought it back up. I would like to see more of our schools offering dual emergent because it's so important to have a second language. And the student, a former student that gave a wonderful speech, you know, talking about how you excelled in that program is just awesome and both of you. I didn't get a chance to shake your hand back there. But kudos, you're gonna do well. And for our little shy guy, that was amazing. You keep up the good work. And one day you're gonna stand there and you're gonna speak loud. But until then, you're okay. You're okay. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So um, when I first moved out out here, I did not know we had a dual immersion immersion pro- program. I would have loved to have put my my dog, dog, daughter, because the other two were lot lost cause causes. Well, they were too, too, too old. They were too old. And so for for you to come and share your your experience, experience means means a lot. Ho- hopefully more parent parents know and will hopefully get their kids in it. Hopefully we have room. Don't know, but I think it's great. I I can speak it. I can un-understand understand it. But but if I try try to write it, I'm sounding out every single like, I don't know. So I I never learned to to read or write, write it. So and Kim, thank you for all you do for this program and I pray that it comes back. I pray it gets fund funded. Because I think it was a brilliant idea, you know, I I went back to to school. I had my my son dur- during spring break, you know. So it it and it does mean mean a lot when you are give given the the opportu- tunity. So hope hopefully C S E A, the state will get that go going again. And thank, thank you to our rep represent sent sentitives who went to the con- con- conference. So, alright, so now we're going to go on to four close uh set session deck declarations. We will be take taking id items four point zero two and four point zero three into closed sess- session. Go home, going on to pub public test testimony, be be before closed sess- session. Five point zero zero, let's see, zero two, I do believe I have a representative from C S E A. Um, I don't know if I have one from A A D T A for closed.
Mr. Sinatra, do we have anybody from A D T A for closed session? On Zoom or anybody in the audience? Mr. Han, we have Mr. Han here this evening, Madam President.
Okay, Mr. Han, you're gonna speak on closed sess- session? Okay, okay, so then, um, Miss Di- Diane Lynn.
Good evening, President Benz, trustees, certified staff, classified staff and all others attending this meeting. First of all, I would like to thank Kimma Vigliano for the great presentation tonight. And also thanks to Anthony Sinatra, Kimma Vigliano again, Damian Johnson and Verdi Koval for representing our chapter at the C S E A conference. We had a couple, well, we had a rough start this year with our phones, internet, Aries and buses, bus routes. As usual, our classified staff are able and capable of managing despite all of the roadblocks. I'd like to thank our I T department who have been understaffed and have been working several hours getting everything up and running. You guys are awesome. Thank you. Also for the bus drivers that did show up and were taking the extra routes and making sure that our students were safely returned to and from school. We are looking forward to negotiations this year and trust that you notice our commitment to our students, parents, community, staff, district and cabinet. Thank you. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we have from the the audience mem- members, Ree- Risa B- B- Badias.
Hi, um, so since it seems that we must do closed session at the beginning of meetings. And this deters families from being able to stay involved with board meetings or engage with board meetings since they often go several hours, a few hours, but they go for a really long time. I would ask tonight that the board choose to fix a time at which to adjourn the closed session and return to it after the meeting or after open session if necessary so that we can actually keep families and participants here. Because as you can see, we have a lot of people here, but the longer closed session lasts, the fewer participate and stay. So thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, thank, thank you. Okay, so let me flip my page here. So we will re-recess to closed sess- session. I I need a mo- motion, please.
Akisai motion.
And I need a second, second, La French. And calling for the vote, please. Trustee Webster.
Hi.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Akis.
I.
Trustee Ben.
Ben's eye, motion passes five zero zero. The time is now six oh seven. So that hopefully we can get out of here. Well, that's hey, don't, don't challenge, challenge me because I'm I'm up to to the cha- challenge. Okay, um, I'm a seven point zero zero one call to ord- order. Please, please take take roll.
Madam President, the time is eight o'clock. I'll take roll call. Trustee Akis. Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee Benz.
And Benz pres- present. Quor- quorum is estab- established. There were no closed sess- session things to report. That's a tech- technical term. Uh, now let's go go on to nine pub public test testimony. I believe I have a rep representative from A A D T T A who is speaking.
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to welcome Mr. Brian Hahn to the podium this evening, representing A D T A.
Is it, um, surprise?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Board President, trustees, interim superintendent Kraus, executive cabinet, esteemed colleagues, district employees and our community stakeholders. My name is Brian Hahn. I'm the Vice President of the Adalanto Teachers Association. We would like to thank our board members first for their ongoing and unwavering commitment to the students of our school district. We know that each month you make a number of personal sacrifices to oversee the needs of our district. We appreciate your dedication and devotion to serve. Thank you, Board President Benz, trustee Turner, trustee La French, trustee Akis and trustee Webster. We will continue to look forward to our ongoing dialogue at future board meetings as we work to achieve our goal of being the premier learning establishment in the high desert. In order for us to attain this designation, we need to embrace, promote and exemplify the gold standard as employees and servants of the district. When we go out to a restaurant, we usually have the expectation of having a gold standard experience. Recently, actually just this past Saturday, my wife and I went out to one of our favorite restaurants where we usually expect the gold standard experience. And what happened was completely different from anything that we had ever experienced there before. And that was that we were greeted, we had a friendly greeting, we were seated. And then we sat for about ten to twelve minutes without any interaction from anyone in the restaurant. Finally, the server came over, asked if we would like something to drink. And we went ahead and ordered a drink. The drinks came. Then there was another probably ten or twelve minute pause before anyone came back to take the order. We ordered an appetizer. We ordered our dinners. We saw people runners trying to deliver food to our table that didn't belong to us, to other tables that didn't belong to them. And we never received our appetizer. So you're probably wondering, where is he going with this? You know, he's talking about the restaurant, but anyway. So the whole evening, which should have taken, you know, about an hour, took two and a half. Took two and a half after a long day. So why do I, why am I talking about the restaurant? Well, I was thinking as I watched, as I watched and tried to assess, this server was trying to handle too many people. There were too many tables. He was running. And at times, things were just slammed down on the table. And it was clear, it was clear that he was not capable of handling that many, although we have, we had had that server before. And he was a gold standard server who always made sure that everything was to perfection. So with that in mind, I want you to think about and compare that experience to teachers. Combo classes and students who have lost a lot of learning in the last couple of years. As we get ready to as we get ready to evaluate our classes at school sites and what will happen. And now we, and as we all know, the last couple of years has had a huge impact on our students. We need to assess everything through the lens of our children. What can we do to improve the quality of their education? Should we be packing classes to thirty six at fourth and fifth grade levels? Or should we provide an opportunity for students to to have a a reduced number of students in the classroom considering the fact that they have had this learning loss over the last couple of years? Teachers are not looking for an easier road. We are looking for the best for our children. We want our children to succeed. We want only the best for them. In the past, we have created combo classes and packed our classrooms with the maximum number of students permitted in the collective bargaining agreement. For any one of you who have been in a fourth or fifth grade classroom, they're not that big. And to put thirty six desks with students packed together, it's not an ideal learning situation. So look what happened to the gold star server when he was overloaded with people to serve. The manager of the restaurant could have done better, could have done a better job to ensure that the customers were receiving the gold star standard of service. And we need to ensure that our children and our families are also receiving the gold starts, gold star standard of education in a premier learning environment. Please, please, please consider what's best for our children. They are all counting on us. In another arena, let's talk about our TK students. Our teachers at the TK level are very concerned with the lack of restroom facilities for the TK students during lunch recess. Are you aware that on most campuses, these children are unsupervised while they access restroom facilities in their TK classrooms during lunch recess while the classroom teacher is at lunch and not in the classroom? These children need to be supervised and should not be left to their own devices in unoccupied classrooms. Additionally, TK and kindergarten teachers have asked that I bring this to your attention. They have been requesting tricycles for years and would like the board to consider the purchase of them for every campus. As you may know, research has shown that when children use tricycles, they utilize both sides of the brain simultaneously, which ultimately promotes brain development. A consideration of new playground equipment for many of our campuses should also be considered as well. As we promote the gold standard in our district, we must evaluate every aspect of what we are doing to support and retain our gold standard employees. On a weekly basis, we hear of yet one, two, three or more gold standard employees leaving our district for better opportunities than our district has been able to offer them. We cannot continue to lose our valued employees. Employees stay because they feel valued and appreciated. And our children are counting on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next it is, oh gosh, I hope I don't ruin the name. Heather or four K? Bork, sorry, I, I'm sorry.
It happened, I got into it. Hello, Board of Trustees, Cabinet Members. My name is Heather Bork. I am one of your few moderate to severe teachers in your district. Many of you may not even know who I am or have even heard my name. And this is because I'm not one to ask for help. And I tend to handle things a lot on my own. I'm coming here tonight because I felt compelled, a little short for me, or I'm short for it, to come to be a voice for those who don't have one. My students are primarily nonverbal, so I'm literally their only voice. I can and have handled a lot in my seven years of teaching here in this district. Thank you. To put into perspective, some things that I have been through in the last seven years of working here, I've been through five psychologists, at least two different directors, two or three occupational therapists, multiple nurses and more paraprofessionals than I can count. And I still remain unstaffed or unfully staffed to this day. While this is something I can handle because I am capable of adapting to change, my students are not. I work extremely hard to overcompensate so that my students do not suffer. Now that I have given my perspective, I will focus my attention back to why I'm compelled to speak to you tonight. I'm here to give a voice to all my students who have none. I was recently told that my students will no longer be getting their speech services in person and they will be serviced online. My students have not ever been on a online service because it doesn't work for our population of students. While I am happy that my students are getting speech services at all in any fashion because I have heard that some have not even been given speech services or do not know what they will look like. I'm devastated. Being online means I have to pull a paraprofessional away from my already understaffed classroom. They will have to help my students focus and keep their attention because there is no way an online teacher can do this. I am heartbroken because we have seen so much growth over the years of our in-person services. They need hands-on learning that online does not bring. Distance learning was absolutely the most challenging thing I have ever done with my students. And now having my students move to online speeches leaves me empty. Empty because of the progress that I feel will be lost, empty because we aren't meeting their needs, empty because I have no choice, empty because there's nothing I can do. I understand that we are understaffed everywhere and I get that. I just came here to voice my concern and hope that you hear my cries. I came here in person and waiting for my time to speak because of how important this is to me and my students. I am choosing to be here at this district. Where I can go because I love the students and I love what I do, I could easily go somewhere else and make more money with bonuses and incentives, but I'm choosing to be here and I just want to be heard. So thank you for listening and have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we would like to call, and I'm going to start with a student. Morgan McCullough, if I believe they're online, Mr. Sinatra, do you see Morgan online?
I do not. Let me check through Zoom handle.
Looks like the, the parent is Jeanette McCullough perhaps? I hope I'm pronouncing that last name correctly and if not, I do apologize. And we can always circle back if you don't see them on, on there right now.
I do not see them right now, no.
Great. Moving right along, Madam President, we do have a next speaker and we'd like to welcome Ms. Beatrice Harrison to unmute and do you see her in the audience in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Sinatra?
Yes, asking her to unmute now.
All right, thank you.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, good. Okay, I'm here speaking on behalf of the bus drivers and transportation situation. We've just had many complaints from parents, so some of the drivers wanted to speak on those complaints. The complaints that we've been having have been the kids are sitting three to a seat. They're in aisles, so there's really no room because of course the overcrowding. We've also had complaints about the middle school and elementary school mixing together there. We're actually picking up both middle school and elementary. Like Columbia and you know, West Creek or some of the schools, you know, they're being picked up with the middle school. We've also had complaints about the routes there. Actually, we've had routes that have been canceled. So a lot of the special needs kids have gotten calls today saying that they won't have a bus, so they have to take their own kids to school. And we also know that some of the, that even though we're already overcrowded, there's been additional bus stops that are added and there's just been added like for kids that are out of the boundary. So we, we were wondering why that is happening since we're already short staff. I think that the narrative with the drivers is that they don't come to work. I've heard that, you know, I've heard good for the drivers that show up, but drivers do show up. Our transportation department, we're actually like eight, nine drivers short and we've been like that for the, you know, past, since I've been here nine years, we've been short. I think that the only thing is that's different this year is the bell schedule with the three middle schools. So we do understand that, but we're not understanding why all of the routes change. We're trying to figure that out, why all the routes and all the route numbers change. So we just have the same concerns that the parents are having. So we wanted to be, we wanted to be brought to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. And Madam President, the next speaker we'd like to welcome is Ms. Deborah Pennell. Pennell, I am so sorry. I try my best. I will get better.
Good evening, Board and Trustees and everyone. My name is Deborah Pennell and it's my first time speaking, so bear with me. I'm kind of nervous, but anyway. I'm a bus driver for the district. I've been here also nine years. And I'm here to represent drivers who are concerned regarding how the changes by our new management has affected our department, which is transportation. As everyone are aware of the time changes due to the middle schools went to, into effect this year. The routes has changed completely, all of them. Which was as drivers who are out driving these routes on a daily basis, were not involved in any of the changes. We, which is a disaster right now to us, complete disaster. Meaning our children are on the routes up to sometimes on some of these routes, two hours, two hours. I had a parent that, because yes, I shared my phone number with some of my parents. And I had a parent call me and she said, Ms. Deborah, where's my daughter? Where's Lily? And I said, I have no idea because they put her on another route and had me covering another route, which didn't make sense, but it happened. She texts me and I have the text and it says, she said, they dropped her off just now and that was at 5:07. Now she got on that bus at 3:20 from Gus Franklin. It was no need for her to be on that bus that long. Okay, that was just a brief example. Right now, parents are now dropping off and picking up their own children, including her, but right now she's out on COVID. She talked to me this morning. But they, my bus has been short because parents are tired and they's picking up their kids, they're dropping them off. Some of our buses have no AC. We are in triple digits. So we have kids that are sweating profusely, even with the windows down. Parents are not understanding that. So that's also leading them to pick up their own children. Never mind, okay. And the parents, of course, they sound off with the bus driver. Then transportation staff and then the district, okay? So to my understanding, that's what some of my parents told me, they yelled calling the various places. The drivers has spoken with staff members in our department who's in charge, meaning Ms. Ruth and Ms. Michelle and Ms. Ruth, she only hears us. She's not listening. Okay, we understand she's new, but we know these routes. We've been on them for years. Okay? They did not need to completely change, not all of them, only the ones that was affecting the middle school and some of the elementary. We as drivers, we have a driver, Ms. Tina. She delegated all of us drivers one year before COVID, when no one was in that office. And she got on that radio and told 104 where to go, which was me, told 105 where to go. And she was delegating us because we had no idea. Okay? So for now, all the routes are changed. We have no idea what bus is going here, what driver is going here. It didn't make any sense to us. And we were like, why weren't we involved in the change? Who else know the routes better than the drivers? You're not out there, you're new to the district. Do not come into our district as far as I'm concerned. And say, we are like La Mirada or Norwalk. We are not. And we know our parents, we know our students because we've been there. She said it was discrimination against the student, against the students and that's why we had to change routes. Disagree completely. I have and a lot of drivers know our parents, know our kids. If you're on a special needs route and you with an artistic child that knows you and then all of a sudden there's change, we have an issue that we didn't need.
Ms. Pennell, I gotta end your time sweetheart.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. You went over the time, but I want we just request to be involved, involve more in the changes instead of just forcing us to be changed. Okay?
Okay, no, it's okay. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Madam President, we'd like to call Tina Riggs if she's in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Sinatra. Do you see Ms. Riggs in there?
Yes, there.
If you can ask her to unmute, that would be great. Thank you.
You're breaking up. Can, can you, you say, say it again? Do you hear, hear me?
Thank you for being able to speak right now.
We're have, having a real hard, hard time un-understand, standing you, you're breaking up like bad.
Try turning off your video.
Let's, let's come back to, to her.
We'll, we'll come back to Ms. Riggs and try her back in a few minutes, see if her reception gets any better.
No, it, it's real, real hard to, to understand, stand you. You, you may have, have to leave, leave the, the immediate meeting and then come, come back. We'll, we'll come back to, to you.
We'll, we'll come back to Ms. Riggs. Hopefully she's able to log off and come back on. We'll like to welcome her back in a few minutes. Moving to the next speaker, we'd like to welcome Ms. Jennifer Rader, who's, is she in the audience on the Zoom meeting, Mr. Sinatra?
I'm asking her to unmute now.
Yes, I'm here. Hi. Okay, good evening. I'm reading a letter from a teacher who, a little bit, a little bit speaker shy. She'd really prefer to express herself in writing. And so I'm reading her letter to you and to all the stakeholders listening. To whom may concern, I'm a fifth grade teacher at Eagle Ranch. This is my 27th year teaching fifth grade students at Eagle Ranch. Currently, we have three fifth grade classes, two with credential teachers and one with a long-term sub. It was recently brought to my attention that the district has no intentions of filling our long-term subs position with a credential teacher. Instead, I was informed that the district's intentions are to fill our fourth and fifth grade classes at Eagle Ranch to 36 students and have one of our fourth grade teachers become a four, five combo teacher. I find this very disheartening as we have enough students in fourth and fifth grades to have three full fourth grade teachers and three full fifth grade teachers. This year, we have more incoming fourth and fifth grade students than we had last year. Classes currently sit anywhere from 28 to 31 students in each class. It doesn't make sense to have our classes at 36. This does not benefit our elementary students at all. Our classrooms are too small for 36 students. This would create wall-to-wall seating with no room for movement. With classes packed like this, it would be impossible to focus on academics. Ideas like group work, science centers, small group instruction cannot even be fathomed with 36 students jammed into a classroom. Our students' behavior is already challenging. Putting more students in the room means more behavior issues, which means the focus immediately will turn to behavior management over academics. This would be a huge disservice to our students. In my classroom alone, I have four students reading at kindergarten level as a fifth grade teacher. 18 of my students scored third grade and below on the Star Reading Assessment. 24 of my students scored below proficient in math on the casp. The thought of having 36 students in my room makes me sad. I would not be able to meet the needs of all my students. This cannot be good for students, especially the types our district is responsible for teaching. These children do not need to be crammed into a room where the majority of the day is spent trying to keep behavioral issues from exploding in hopes that we might be able to barely skim the surface of the academics that these elementary students need. Packed classrooms are a step in the wrong direction. It benefits no one in our district. This will cause our district to fall terribly. We'll have to, we have to be better than this. We need to put the needs of the children first. They do not deserve cramped classrooms as stressful environment. We owe our students more than this. Please consider keeping our fourth and fifth grade classroom sizes smaller. Anything else hurts our students. And the fact is, that's the end of her letter, but the fact is that we are facing COVID spikes and we're losing the ability to, to work with our students in little groups. The classes are being split and you're having a class with 36, add in more kids from another, from another class. I'm, I see my time is up, but we have to do better than this for our kids. We have to do better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, this time we'd like to welcome Ms. Angelique Jolly. I believe she's on Zoom, Mr. Sinatra. Do you see her in the Zoom room?
I do, asking them to unmute now. Is it, let me ask this one.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, hopefully it's working. I would like to say that at 22 years, or actually going in, yeah, 24 years of teaching, that this is the first year that I have ever felt so overwhelmed with class sizes and having been stacked with every single solitary RSP student in a classroom. Not only is it, they are reading at first grade reading levels. They are also disciplinary frustrated. Out of that entire class, there are three proficient students. I feel really, I honestly can't even tell you guys how I'm feeling because it's asinine that you would put that many RSP students in one class. Even though there are teacher support, they should be pulled out and not pushed in and not having to co-teach with the teacher. I mean, we've had discipline problems in Atlanta as far as I've been at Shepherd Middle School. But never has it been so frustrating for teachers to deal with not only them not being able to take notes because they can't write, or it takes 10 minutes for a student to write two words, holding everybody back. But also having 33 kids in a class. When you have that many kids that are so behind. And so stacking your classes, I have to agree with Brian and Jennifer, what they were saying is our kids need more. And stacking your RSP kids with one teacher and tracking them, I feel is wrong. Most of them looking at their IEPs have for 45 minutes to 90 minute pullouts. There are only three push-ins and I don't understand why all of them are in. So dealing with that discipline and then looking at other teacher salaries in the district, I mean, in other surrounding districts. There's a $17,000 difference between ours and other districts now because we got 3.5% last year where others got 10 and 7%, anywhere from seven on up. So think about your teachers, think about our students because we're on the front line dealing with the issues at hand and finding it very unrealistic having that many students in one class that can't read or write. Something has to be done and you can't expect just because teachers are here for the kids that you should be stacking those. here for the kids that you should be stacking those, those kids in one class and tracking those kids. It's just not right. They should be spread out between all of the teachers. That's all I have to say. Hopefully you guys take that into consideration when other districts are offering $17,000 more for their hard work and dedication to their students with the full years. Anyways, have a great night.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, Madam President, just circling back, uh, is Mr., uh, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a man or a woman, Morgan McCullough. Do you see them in the, in the waiting room or a Jeanette McCullough by chance? Okay, and then we'd like to then circle back with Ms. Riggs. Ms. Riggs, are you there? Perhaps, uh, if you want to try your communication device again to see if it comes in clearer. You can ask Ms. Riggs to unmute, Mr. Sinatra.
Asking her to unmute now and leave your video on.
Hello?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm from, I'm from the Transportation Department and I've been in the district for a long time. And this is my first startup that has been just really chaotic. Even though it is chaotic, you have the best drivers that you could ever have. Because we are putting it together and trying to get it done, even though it's chaotic to us. I just want to say that, um, having the routes the same helps us, helps the kids, helps the parents. The times would be the same. The only difference would be with the time that had changed on the middle schools. That's all that needed to be done. And then we could have figured it out and worked out and added some stops because we did have more drivers and now we only have, I think, 28 or 29 drivers. And I believe they have like 30 or 31 routes and we're trying to cover them. And it's, it's difficult. The school, Melva Davis and West Creek, they get out at the same time. They go in pretty much at the same time. So the, the buses have both students on. They have special needs students on the bus for two hours and they're mixed, mixed in with the middle school and the, and the elementary school. And, um, that's really not a good situation. And the middle school being mixed in with the elementary is not a good situation. And we understand the parents are concerned about the buses being packed with the 80, 82 kids, three to a seat. But it is legal, but we as bus drivers, we don't think it's safe either. But we don't want to leave the kids on the corner either. So, you know, it's a catch 22. We don't know. We just need more drivers. But I just want to let you know that the drivers that you have are awesome. And the drivers that, um, we do what we have to do, whether it's difficult for us or not. We are out there to help and get our children to school, but it is much easier when we know what we are doing and what we're up against. I can't even tell you how it works. I was disappointed that we had to turn down, tell people that they had to take their students to school and pick them up. Had someone come to us, we could have fixed it because I did have a sit, have it handled when I heard that. But I can't do anything. I'm not supervisor. But maybe if we have a conversation, you know, and they, we can talk to them and we can have the input, we can help. But I do want to thank Mr. Kraus and, um, the cabinet, they came down and talked to us and they, and they heard our concerns, but we just need to implement the things that we had discussed. So thank you very much for listening. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes our public speaking at this time.
Uh, we still got one, one more. Uh, Ms. Reese, Reese.
Absolutely. Thank you. I did not see that.
Yeah. She snuck it in there. No, just kidding.
Now that I've seen which button it is. So first and foremost, as predicted, the room is empty again. Close session was almost two hours. People were waiting here because this is important to us. But people have left the Zoom. All the families that we had here left. Dude, I'm hungry. I would love to be at home eating with my kid, but I don't know when close session is going to come back. So I wait instead. I know it's inconvenient for y'all to have to set time limits or to even have to stay after. But you know what? This is a representative body. Y'all are elected by the community. This is for the community. We would like to participate. This makes it a lot harder to do so. More importantly, we are seeing that our district's choices have come to roost. We don't have enough bus drivers to get our kids to school on time each day. Herb to Herb being canceled for a number of our moderate to severe special ed students. Even if it's just temporary is so far from acceptable. This is so disruptive to the routines that so many disabled students depend on for stability as part of their ability to emotionally regulate. Our families depend on these services because these services allow our families to have a regular work schedule too. We're a poor community. We are a working community. So many of our families commute down the hill. So if there isn't a bus for their kids, if their kids are on the bus for two hours, that's also disruptive to work schedules. There is so much at stake. And our bus drivers see our kids at the hardest parts of their day. Some kids are not morning people and after school, we've all seen our kids collapse from the restraint that they exercise throughout the day. They're itching to be home and they're excited to be out of the school environment. So our bus drivers get to handle our kids at the times of the day when our kids are maybe not at their best and they do it anyway because they love our kids. We are not showing them that love in return. Our students are still being shuffled around in classrooms and now they're being shuffled to different campuses? And it's all because we don't have enough teachers and staff for all of our kids. And we don't have enough teachers and staff because we refuse to adequately compensate our teachers. That is a choice that our district has made. What the district refuses to pay our teachers and staff, our kids pay for in disruption to their educations. We need better. This is an insult to our kids and to our community.
Thank you. Hey, going on to 10, and I think that's all, all the speakers, right?
Yes, Madam President, that concludes it this.
Okay, so go, going on to 10, uh, cab- cabinet re- reports.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, members of the community that are with us in person and on Zoom this evening. We hear you. Let me say, Mr. Han, I appreciate your comments about the gold standard. We hear you. We know that our staff are the gold standard in the high desert. We want to make sure that they continue to be the gold standard in the high desert. We also hear our CSEA members, our family in transportation and their concerns that they have had since day one. We are actively working with them. I appreciate their patience. Uh, as Ms. Riggs had stated, while cabinet went down there with some members of CSEA to talk to the drivers and try to come up with workable solutions. What Ms. Riggs didn't tell you, she said she was here a long time. She's been here almost 30 years in the district as a bus driver. And so has been 30 years in the district as a bus driver. That's the gold standard. And we appreciate all of our drivers, if they've been here for 30 years, 30 days, 30 seconds. We do hear you. We have been working actively and we will do better to get better at what we're doing. And we appreciate the collaboration with our ADTA family, our CSEA family and our management family working together to come up with solutions. And so we do hear you, the board hears you, the administration hears you, and we're hoping to be able to fix a lot of the issues that we are facing this year. We are down about seven or eight drivers when it comes to transportation. Our HR department is actively recruiting and we will have a couple of job fairs coming up. Uh, one this month, I believe, one in the month of October. And so we are actively recruiting bus drivers as we speak. We've been doing that for a while. There is a nationwide shortage of bus drivers, which doesn't help us any. But we know the experience that we have with our family here, we will be able to come up with solutions to solve these problems. So we do appreciate your patience and we do hear you. Just a few, uh, notes of things that we were able to do, uh, since school started, we were excited that school has started. Uh, cabinet and many of the managers had the opportunity to go to back-to-school nights at several schools. We were excited to be out there and visiting with our families and our, our staff and seeing our students smiling. We do have another back-to-school night major event on Thursday night. We have several schools that are having their back-to-school nights on this Thursday night. Please check with your school's administration. Uh, but we are excited to be able to be out there and about this Thursday night as well. We are focusing again this year on academic achievement as we always do. We appreciate all of our staff, including our teachers, setting that gold standard in academic achievement. One of the things I would like to just stress to everyone, the importance of attendance and coming to school every day. And I know that it takes all of us to encourage our families, encourage our students to come to school every day. I know there'll always be reasons why they can't always be here, but we want to make sure that we're helping them out as much as we can to get to school. And that's where transportation comes in. That's where it comes, working with our families, working with our students and making sure that they have what they need, the supports they need to come to school for attendance. We are starting out the school year. We were at 91% attendance rate, our average daily attendance this last week. So if we can maintain that throughout the year, we're excited to work with everyone to be able to maintain that. COVID did give us a big hit last year. We were around 86%. So we have improved dramatically and we'd like to continue that. So we're excited about the attendance rate that we've seen, but it's important that everyone comes to school every day and, and, uh, the teachers I know are excited to see their smiling faces every day as well as us. We're also looking at our SE, uh, social emotional learning and mental health this year. And so we're excited that on the agenda this evening, you'll see where we are sending staff to, um, PBIS conferences. We're sending staff to applied suicide intervention skills conferences where we're equipping our staff with the knowledge to be able to help our students' mental health. And so I just want to make sure that we highlight that because it's so important, especially since the pandemic, that we really pay attention to what our students are telling us or what they're not telling us. Uh, because it's not always on the outside that we can see what's going on. The same thing with our staff. We want to make sure that we're supporting our staff and making sure they have the supports that they need. And so as we move forward, uh, those are some of the areas we're going to be looking at. And, uh, Mr. Moran, moving on to human resources, he does apologize. He had to, uh, leave us, but I did have a few quick notes from HR. A lot of great things going on in the human resources department. And so, um, he, Mr. Moran would like to thank, uh, Jennifer Rader, Mr. Stephen Tapio for meeting with him over the past several weeks, uh, to review student enrollment. And that's one of the things we've been assessing since day one, how our enrollment has been at our schools, how our attendance has been. And we are having those conversations about class sizes. We do hear you about the class sizes and we are still adjusting uh, as we move forward. And so again, uh, Mr. Moran does appreciate that collaboration as well with meeting with them. And then with CSEA, meeting to talk about the health clerks this past, uh, week and, uh, working with Melanie and our benefits department and our risk management department and HR team, working with that to talk about filling our vacancies, making sure that our health clerks have the tools they need and the information they need to be successful at the sites. We're happy to report that we, uh, filled three information support system technicians in our IT department. And so we had some vacancies there. So I know that that's vital to keeping our Chromebooks going, to keeping our, our monitors going, to keep our computer systems going, internet, everything that we do technology-wise. And so we were able to fill those. We're excited to be able to report that out. Uh, last Thursday, uh, Mr. Moran was able to attend the coach's induction orientation led by Mr. Brown, a representative from the Riverside County Office of Ed. And he was able to interact with teachers across the county, across the district. And he wants to thank Ms. Vicky Bell, our induction representative for leading this work for our new teachers and our supporting teachers. And then again, he also wanted to say thank you for all of the administration and staff, classified staff and certificated staff for the back-to-school night. So with that, HR's report, I'm going to turn over Dr. Dwyzen to give us a quick update on, uh, academic services.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. So good evening, Board President Vince, Board of Trustees, um, Mr. Kraus and staff and community. So we'd like to highlight some of the following items from academic services that's going on. So schools have been busy from actually day one. Uh, testing is a continuous year-long cycle. And so our, uh, schools have already begun, uh, initial LPAC. Um, we must test all kindergarten students during the first 30 days of school as well as our universal screening. So district-wide, we test our student, students. Where are we in language arts? Where are we with math? So that we have an accurate, um, ability to know where our students are from the beginning of the year. So we want to thank our schools for working hard, um, to get, make sure that those are done. So our independent study has begun with two classes up and running at this present time. So parents, um, have to attend orientation, sign a new contract and also receive all materials such as Chromebooks, hotspots and textbooks. Um, when we're looking to open, uh, more classes as the waitlist continues to grow. So a big thank you to our teachers. We have their Sherry Markham and Monica Cooper for their work in helping us establish a strong alternative learning environment for our students, um, in the ISP program. At the next board meeting, we will be bringing an updated ISP policy for review um, to make sure that we are aligned and current with current state policies. Um, we also have our Hope Academy. Uh, we have Ms. Deborah Fernandez and Roma Flores. Um, have been busy working with our academic services team to launch that opportunity alternative class program. So we're very excited about that. Our handbook is just about near to hit the presses. So you should see a copy of that at our next board meeting. Um, where it includes intake process, exit criteria and what the program will offer our students, which also includes a robust data analysis system so that we make sure that we're tracking and monitoring our students. Um, so we look forward to bringing a presentation to the board showcasing this program and our teachers and the wonderful work that they're going to do for our students and provide an alternative learning environment. Um, so I also want to address special education. Uh, we did, um, I want to thank the board for allowing us to, uh, have a new, uh, speech services, uh, provider. Um, so we are working closely. I actually have a meeting with that speech services provider in the morning. So I hear, um, comments and I, I do want to make sure that you know that we are addressing these concerns. Uh, special education speech is a top priority for academic services this year. And so I wanted to make sure that, um, that is known. So we are working to make sure that we have the staff that the agency delivers on the staff and that we move forward because we want to make sure our students are serviced in the manner that suits them the best. So we are moving forward with that. Uh, we are working on LCAP edits, uh, submitted from the county. So I'm happy to report, we actually have very minor um, edits for, um, us, which I kept hearing, uh, kudos to our team, um, here at the district office from the county. So, um, we're going to bring forth at the next board meeting what those edits were. And primarily they were justifications that we had to make as to why we were doing some of the things we were doing. So very minor edits, but we want to thank our team, uh, for the behind the scenes and all the work it puts that together. So you will have an update on that at the next September 13th board meeting. Uh, we are in the midst of Williams case visits. I want to send kudos to Braddock and Gus Franklin right off the gate. They were the first two schools. Um, and so, and their principals, Ms. Valenzuela, Mrs. Peterson, uh, did amazing jobs, passed with flying colors. No, um, insufficiencies reported from those two sites. We expect that from all our sites because they're just amazing. And so, um, we want to thank our sites and we want to thank our, uh, district team, Wendy, Richard, Brandon, everybody chips in for Williams. I went along on the first one and it was, I just felt like I was in the way. I've visited with students. So it was kind of cool. Um, we have been busy enrolling students and working on our attendance response systems for 22, 23. So attendance, um, you've heard that, uh, from Mr. Kraus this evening. So, uh, this year we've trained all sites in SART and attendance documentation procedures, brand new procedures. So we did that before school started. All of our SART meetings are calendared for the year. Um, we want to make sure our staff and families know that attendance matters. Every time you are absent from school, that's vital information that you are missing that supports your students. Um, we want to thank Brenda Holtz for a lot of helping us to make sure that our policies, our procedures are in place. Um, and that we are, uh, ready to make sure that we are, uh, receiving our students and also following policies to make sure that we're um, holding accountable for attendance at the same time. Uh, so we're bid, uh, right now our team is really knee-deep in federal program monitoring. That takes a lot of time. But I'm really proud of our team for stepping up, actually all divisions for stepping up. That's a huge project. I look forward to sharing these findings with you, um, after our, our review, which is actually September 6 through 9. So I will be. So I will be bringing the results of that. And then it's just been a pleasure being at back to school nights and seeing uh. Families and smiles and the hard work that the teachers have put into creating. Uh these positive learning environments and the leaders. And so uh just know that academic services continues to be a partner. Um in the education for our students. So, thank you.
And that concludes Cabinet's comments. Thank you so much.
Oh, go going on to uh govern governing board mem-. Members, um trustee La French. I'm gonna vol- volunteer told you. I hope it's okay. I hope you don't mind. Please don't be mad at me. Is is your microphone on?
No.
Okay, please. Can you turn that on?
My microphone is not on. Thank you. I appreciate being voluntold. I do want to say that, you know, tonight I want to thank everyone that brought. Um information that we need to know. We need to know information that is going to help us support. Our district. If we don't know, then we can't help support. The bus drivers, I want to say. That I appreciate every last one of um the bus drivers that make sure that our children get to and from. And get there in a reasonable amount of time. And I appreciate that there has been talk that is started regarding. The communication on the bus routes. When it comes to TK, TK is a passion and a love of mine. I am um thankful to hear the information that was brought forth regarding that. I'm going to keep my comments short. I just want everyone to know that. During this time, it is really hot, really hot. And to hear that we don't have air conditions on some of our bus, that's something that you know that we need to look into. And we didn't, we may not be aware of that. But I appreciate everyone and I thank you and I'll keep my comments short because I know that we're nine o'clock.
All right, thank, thank you, trust trustee Ek- Ekis.
Yes, very quickly, um bus drivers, you guys are awesome. You really are. And I I know many of you. I've been here seventeen years. And just in case you didn't know, once in a while I drop off Fudge back there in your break room. And I, you know, I don't make a big deal out of it. I just want to let you know that you are loved and you're cared for. And I like to treat you guys sometimes to let you know you're so appreciated, so appreciated. So thank you. Thank you for your service. Um also, our special ed teachers, I apologize. I don't think we thank you enough. I know your jobs are so hard and your hearts are so in it. And those kids are so beautiful and I hear from their parents quite often how appreciated they are of you. So I want you to know that we appreciate you and we love you for what you do. And if we can help you, please let us know. And I appreciate you coming tonight and saying what you said. So thank you. Um last but not least, um I attended the back to school nights at Ted Vic and Braddock. Um Ted Vic was cool. They both had two different styles, but I was, I loved being at both schools. Um after Ted Vic, I took off and ran over to Braddock. Because that's where my son went to school for a couple of years and my heart is always there. Um I think I got to meet and see every single teacher in their classroom. I got to meet the three new teachers we have over there. And the atmosphere was just so beautiful. You could tell both school sites, everybody's excited. The kids are, the teachers are, the parents are. It is just beautiful. And I, it was a blessing to be able to be at both, both of those schools. And just enjoy the excitement of going back to school and being free to be back in a classroom to teach and learn. And it was beautiful. It was, oh, I just can't say enough about it. But anyway, uh again, beautiful, coming back to school, teachers, you guys look great. Your classrooms are absolutely gorgeous. It was a blessing again, just to be at those schools and be able to partake in that. And I hope to attend a lot more during the year. Um other than that, um but campuses look awesome. Uh thank you, Mister Kraus. I know he he made a lot of effort to get our schools in shape before they started. And you can tell there was a lot of effort put into it. So thank you, maintenance and custodians and everybody. Who made our schools look just so nice this year. So that's it. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, tru- trustee Web- Webster.
Good evening. I will keep these pretty short. Um I want to start off by saying that. Our district has faced a lot of adversity in the last couple of years. Um we've changed and grown. Um but most importantly, we've come together each time we needed to. Um and we work together and collaborate to make ourselves better every single day. I, you know, understand that right now we are facing a lot of issues in the beginning of the school year. And I want to thank every single person on the ground in our district facing this every day. You are what makes this district matter. The bus drivers, the special education's teachers, every single student that. My list could go on. Um. But I do want to take the the moment and acknowledge how special we all are. Um and how with the collaboration that we've brought to the table now. We are able to set the foundation for our future. So thank you for your patience. Thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your loyalty. And I hope that we can live up to you as well. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank, thank, thank you, trust trustee Turner.
Thank you. Thank you, my fellow trustees for your comments. I'll keep mine short as well. Uh first, I would like to thank all of you. Um we've only been in the school year for a couple of weeks now. Um and I'm hearing the concerns and again, thank you for addressing those concerns. With that being said, I believe that we're on the right track. And making our district a premier district, something that we all strive for. Teachers, we couldn't do it without you. Bus drivers, we couldn't do it without you. Our custodial staff, our kitchen staff, all of you, our cabinet. Um our, our, our secretaries, our administrative assistants, we couldn't do it without you. And I just would like to say, I visited Mesa Linda um last week. And I have to say. Pretty much all the teachers that I spoke with, saying that this is the new Mesa Linda. Doctor Kramer is doing an amazing job. Do we still have issues? Yes, we do. But I see that they're coming together. The school has been divided. Sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade, they have their own group. There's no hanging out, what I used to see. Um and like I said, we still have problems, but I could see it molding into a premier learning environment. And I know all of our schools. Will come together because of people like you. And like you, that's not here today. Wanting the best for our students. And parents, those of you that are not sending your children to school, please, please, please. Send your children to school. If not in person, our independent studies program is available for you. And because all children deserve the highest quality education possible. And the only way they're going to get that is to come to school. I would also like to say. That um our campuses are looking good. Mesa Linda was clean. I saw people, teachers picking up trash. I saw students picking up trash. I did not see a student without a a a pass outside. Everyone knew their role and they're doing a good job. Um I'll keep this short. I would just like to wish trustee La French a belated birthday.
Yes.
And I would like to wish.
Thank you very much.
Her birthday is Friday.
Leo sees them.
And I'm looking forward to. Again, thank you to all of you out there. Your, 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 your comments mean a lot to us. And we, you know, even though our closed session was long, sometime we have to go in and make decisions before we come out here. And talk to you. And I know that sometime it could be frustrating, but there's been times when. We went into closed session late at at the end of the meeting and we should have discussed it at the beginning of the meeting and we had to come back out. And some things didn't get handled. So I apologize for that. I know sitting out there, you don't understand because I was out there at one time. And but when I came back here, everything changed. I'm trustee Western. She can attest to that.
Yeah.
So um again, thank you for hanging around. Um we don't mean to make you wait, but we only have. Twice a month to do the business of the district, to make decisions for our district. And it can't be. Rushed in making those decisions. So again, thank you for your participation and your cooperation. Bus drivers, teachers, administrat- administrators, everyone. You know, I appreciate you. We all do. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. For first thing I want, want to say is uh bu- bus drive. Drivers have special, special angel wings. Because I couldn't do your job. I work with kids and I still couldn't do your job. So you do have, I really. I have the utmost respect, especially for the ones who have been here. For thirty-plus years. I mean, that takes just. I, I don't want to say gum gumption, but it just takes pa- passion to do it that that long. Um I'm, I'm really going to keep these short. I just want to say thank you to Braddock. I I did, did go to their back to to school night. In fact, I closed the house down. They kick, kick. Kick me, me out at seven, seven o'clock. It's like, why are you still here? What? He was like. So um I, but the thing that I love most about when I go, go to the school on the parent, parents' nights is the parents that go. It's like a commune, unity. It's like when I used to go to San, San Blas, Blasme, Mexico. And we all went to the small town and you know, you have the little vend- vendors there and stuff. And everybody goes and they talk and you got the music and you got the food. That's how the schools feel to me like, like they're a. Come commune, unity sent, sent, center. And I love it. You, the parents talk, the teet, teet. Teachers talk. So I real, really enjoyed my, my time there, though I did miss out on the nacho. Nachos, but that's okay. Um, okay, I'm going to end, end it there so that we can try to get this done. Uh let, let's go on to adopt, adoption of the min- minutes twelve point zero zero one. Board min- minutes uh approve as writ- written and ord- order filled. Reg- regular board me, meeting of Aug- August ninth, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Yeah, cause I motion.
Can I get a sec- second?
Webster, I second.
Okay.
Here's some information.
I was like, what? Okay, so I got a, a mo- motion from Ek- Ekis and a sec- second from Webster. We're o- open for dis- discussion, discussion. Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Sorry about that. Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes five zero, zero. Move, move, moving on to third. Thirteen con- consent agenda. We are take, taking i- items third. Thirteen point zero two through thirteen, thirteen point third, thirty-two. Does and any trustee want to pull an item?
I don't.
For once, I do not. Thank you, Mister Kraus, for being thorough.
Well, good. Okay, I do not have anything to pull. So can I get a mo- motion to uh approve?
I guess I motion.
Webster, I second. Okay, we're open for discussion, discussion. Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Uh Benz, I. Motion passes five zero, zero. We can skip four. Fourteen because none were, were pulled. So let's please go on to fifteen, fif- fifteen point zero, zero one. This business ser- services uh appro- approval to submit San Bernardino County soup. Superintendent, ten- tenant uh of schools form num- number one. Cert- certification of board min- minutes for the interim su- superintendent, my Michael Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is just a formality with the County of San Bernardino Superintendent of Schools. Uh adding my name to be able to sign the certification of board minutes, even though the board had already. Approved me, this form has to be a second part of that formality for the county's records.
Okay. Um I, I need a mo- motion to approve.
I guess I motion.
Hmm, can I get a sec- second? Okay, we're open for dis- di- discuss- discussion. Hearing none, call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion, motion passes five zero, zero. Move, moving on to fif- fifteen point zero, zero two, cer- certificated pers- personnel. Employment of cer- certificated per- personnel on base, basis of a credential wa- waiver. Can I get a mo- motion to uh approve?
Webster, I motion.
Turner, I second.
To approve. Yes. Sorry, I got my mind just went out. Turner, okay, we're up for the discussion, discussion.
I did have a quick question on this one in regards to these uh certi-. Cation, am I saying that right?
True, certificate.
There you go, certification. Um this just is pending full certification, correct?
Thank you for your question. The S A I or specialized academic intervention teacher. Extensive supports is a very hard to fill teaching position. While we are actively seeking a credentialed, fully credentialed teacher, this allows us to uh approve a waiver. For a, another teacher who may not have that credential, but meets the minimum requirements to take over that class until we do find somebody for that.
Thank you. Okay, um is there an, and any other di- discussion? Okay, call, calling for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes five zero.
I am proud of you. I am proud of all of us.
What happened?
My motion.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, uh move, move, moving on to six, sixteen adjourn. Jerman, can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Turner. Motion to adjourn.
I'm going to take Turner as the mo- motion. Can, can I get a second? Was that Ek- Ekis? Okay.
Yes, yes.
And I don't think we need a discuss- ocean, so please call for the vote.
Could we just talk about how amazing it is? Okay.
I.
Go get some food.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Ekis. Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Motion passes five zero, zero. Please, please have a great, great, great night. Please stay and try cool and hy- hydrate rated.
Madam President, the time is nine eleven.
Nine eleven.